Good evening and welcome to the March 22 special Board of Education meeting. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel issues and contract negotiations. Second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
Okay, let's get the party started. We have Irene?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Can we please stand for the pledge? Thank you. Okay. Okay, good evening and good evening to all of those watching livestream from their homes. We welcome you tonight to the Budget Advisory Committee meeting with the Board of Education. And I would like to turn this over to Jeff Carlson.
Thank you.
I just want to interrupt real quick. Does everybody have a name tag because we don't know who everybody's faces are? No? Okay.
Oh, yeah, hand it over. So, we passed out our recommended budgetary reductions in staffing to each of you. This is something that we had gone over, we've been going over for a while in our staffing meetings. This is our projection for next year. This is incorporated into the line item budget that I distributed to you. This is all incorporated into that and would result in a tax increase of 1.94 percent. To remind everyone, our tax cap for next year is 2 percent. This comes out to 1.94 percent. It keeps all of our programs in place. We can go over some of these in more detail, the position by position, if that's what you choose, that's up to you. Also, unless you have different plans for tonight, we can go over with, now that we have the entire board here, as we discussed at the last board meeting, the recommendations that the BAC is making to the board. And if you have additional items that you want to show us, Mike, that's up to you. So, it's your, it's all your meeting, so you tell me what you want to cover tonight.
One quick question. Are the recommended budgetary reductions, are these already reflected in the budget that we received last week?
Yes.
Or these are recommendations?
These are reflected in the budget that you got.
Okay.
Yes.
One other clarification. You mentioned 1.94 percent in that proposed budget that came out the other week, it was 1.91.
Yeah, I saw that, I think it was a typo. I saw 1.91, too.
Oh, okay. Then, let me-
I think it was a typo, and I just haven't had a chance to-
Oh.
Okay.
Well, you're all right, then, let me, let me, let me double check it.
Okay.
It's 1.9 something.
Okay.
All right. Let's round off to the nearest tenth of a percent, 1.9.
All right, so we have a follow-up.
1.9.
So, maybe if you guys have questions that you want to ask first, and then we can get to the part, because what we're interested in hearing are additional recommendations that you might have in excess of this, but what we would like to do also is-
There you go. Okay. All right. Slide two.
Do you need to?
our approach and how we went about looking at the budget and understanding the budget and understanding where we may need to look to find areas that were, that were either overfunded consistently or areas where, when we compared ourselves to other school districts in a cohort that we created, where we ranked much higher in, in things like the cost per pupil, which, which can be a little bit of a touchy thing to, to look at because, you know, the, you know, the budgets and how the budget codes are allocated, when you're calculating cost per pupil, there seems to be, there seems to be, well, a lack of direction, possibly from the state in terms of like how those codes should be rolled up into certain sections, but it's a good place to start. And so, New York State issues this budget transparency report, and in the next few slides, the data that we're going to be looking at is sourced from that, that budget funding transparency report. And, and this was a way for us to go in because it's a, it's a data set that's available for all the schools and it's available in, in Excel, which we like. So, so, at a high level, we started out by, we wanted to be able to build a list of schools that we thought would be appropriate to compare Three Village to, all right? And what we did, what we used as a benchmark when we pulled these reports from the state was, first of all, school districts that had a greater than 4,000 students, all right? Initially, we actually went a bit lower than that to about 2,500, but just to kind of make the list shorter, particularly for the presentation, we cut out the, the smallest of those, of those school districts. Those, the New York State Transparency Report calculates the cost per pupil on several different ways, all right? And so, we looked at it several different ways, all right? Because, you know, a bunch of us that are on this committee, you're actually on this committee because, you know, they've, you know, we've seen that our, you know, cost per pupil numbers are very high, so we wanted to, we thought that'd be a good starting place to see, okay, well, where exactly, what's driving that, right? Because a lot of granular detail is actually provided in this transparency report. So, you could see from, from the list up here, and this is, this is not the complete list of schools that we looked at, the ones that are ranked at the very bottom, I just don't have on here, there's really so much you could put on a, on a screen. So, this one is the, you look at here is the total cost per pupil from the budget transparency report, and again, it thinks about 23 schools that we looked at on Long Island, so you can kind of see where, where we rank, and it's, that's going to number two in terms of the highest cost per pupil. And again, these are all school districts that are on Long Island. We tried to find areas with similar demographics, for the most part, and, and similar enrollment sizes, anyway. So, the, the cost per, per student was around 33,000 per student. The average for that whole grouping was just under, just under 29,000. So, you know, you had some that were, you know, 20, 23,000, 22,000, but the highest were, was Sioset at 34, we were right behind them. So, again, so this was, this is one way to, to look at that, that data set. So, the, the data set also breaks it out into two, like, into, into two main subgroupings. And the two main subgroupings are what they consider central costs, so you could actually go in and you could calculate the, what's considered central costs at a per pupil level. So, that 33,000 that we're looking at for, for Three Village, 8,700 of that 33,000 is from central costs, or what are considered central costs. And I'll get into that in just a moment, like what's actually included inside there. So, when we just look at central costs, which at a high level are costs that are not directly allocated to individual buildings, however, in this report, they actually do calculate a per pupil cost per building, so how do you distribute those central costs which are not allocated at the building level? How do you allocate those to the building level? So, there's a formula for doing that, and there's a, there's a certain, there's a, there's a certain way to define which costs would be included in central costs, and, and if it's not central costs, we'll call them like other costs. So, when we look at central costs and you look at Three Village, we're at the top of the list over there, our central cost per pupil is 8,700, right? And again, that ranges down, if we, you know, if we look at Sajin, they're 5,000 per, per pupil. So, again, it ranges, Sioset's also at the top as, as they were in the last report. Right? So, and the average is about 6,000 per pupil. One of the reasons why we eliminated a lot of the smaller schools is that the idea was that we thought that smaller schools might have higher per pupil central costs, it may not be a good comparison. Yeah, I have a slide on that, so that's going to be two slides away, so. Okay, so, before we get into central costs, we're going to look at the costs that are not central costs, right? So, these are the costs that are able to be allocated at the building level, but it's rolled up and averaged out for the district, and that comes to $25,000 per student, that's not including central costs. And as you can see, when we do remove the central cost from the equation, we're, we're not number one or two on that list anymore, now we are, you know, we're number five at a, you know, so, so those costs are allocated at the building level, when we, when we roll them up and average them out at the school district level, we don't look as bad. So, we really want to go in and take a look at, at central costs and see, okay, what could we figure out and whatever, like, how could we get some direction as to where to look on the budget in terms of the central cost, because that was an area that, that it really does stand out, right? Okay. So, what's included in central costs? So, central costs are broken out into three main areas. We call it district academic costs, general support costs, and OPEB. So, I guess we'll start at the bottom. OPBE is, is other post-employment benefits. This was not an area that we really examined too closely, it may be an area that we do want to look at because we were high, quite a bit higher than the average on this one, but anything that's related to benefits, you know, we kind of just kind of skimmed over and want to look at things that, that might be more control over. The general support costs, and by the way, if it's highlighted in red, right? So, like, you'll see that under each of these categories, you have several different line items. If it's highlighted in red, that means that we were, that we were quite a bit higher than the average, right? So, and, and I'll show those numbers in just a moment, but under general support costs, that's going to include from, from the budget, it would be the departments of Board of Ed, central personnel, operation and maintenance of plants, there's something called other central services, and then just employee benefits for general support staff.
Jeff, do you know the answer to that?
Because, you know, we get a very high level, we get a very high rate of reimbursement on those, so it, to make this, I would want to see it net of that reimbursement, because this is showing our expenditure-
Or, well, right, because this, that includes in central costs about $19 million in bond payments of capital projects, of which we get 60, well, in some cases, more than 66 percent back. But I would say probably of, of the districts on the list, our capital costs are probably higher than probably all of them, I can't say that as a fact without looking them, them up, but we probably are, were certainly higher than most by a substantial amount. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, we have discussed previously what the condition of our buildings was in 15 years ago. For instance, I had mentioned that the tennis courts at Wood Memorial High School were unplayable, our high school team had to go, had their matches at Stony Brook University. So, a lot of money, we put 200, in the last 15 years, $200 million into repairing our buildings to get them back in shape. We're paying those bonds now. We also included in, in that, what we had done in our bond, was we did basically our entire ventilation system over with our 2014 bond, which was key to being able to have all our kids in school last year, five days a week. But all of that cost a lot of money, so you add up capital and bonds and, and the year you're looking at, and it's about $19 million.
Yep.
Much higher than, I'm sure-
Also solar, Jeff.
What's that?
Also solar.
Oh, yeah, we did solar projects, right, but all that's included in that. What's not, as Mr. Conroy mentioned, what that does not address is the building aid that we get on that, which shows up in, in state aid.
Can you net that stuff, can you net that stuff in and run it compared to the other building aid reimbursement percentages of the other, because then otherwise, because it, because then it looks like our expenditures are very high, but actually, we only pay a third of, of what that shows.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
On maybe Jeff, I don't know. Do other districts also have these bonds? Because we're comparing ourselves to other districts, so if they have the bonds and they're not backed out of their numbers, we don't want to back them out of our numbers.
Well, the difference is that we get two-thirds of it back and they don't.
Right, either, well, one or the other, either net it out on, for them and us, or just subtract them from our expenses, subtract it from their expenses. That's what I say, without looking at each of those districts, I can't say as a, as a matter of fact that what we spent in bond payments and capital is higher than every one of those. I, I'd have to look it up. I wouldn't be surprised if that were the case, though, and it's certainly much higher than most of them on that list.
Well, let's not forget that that would just be, that would be like one of these bullet points in here.
But it's a big one.
Oh, but it's a big one.
It is a big one, it's a really big one.
But it's about $3,200 per student.
Right, right, but we'll go into each of those bullet points that are highlighted in red.
Okay, yeah, I'm kind of interested how that nets out.
Actually, so that coming out is about 1,100 per student, 3,300 would be if we were accounting for all 19, but we're reimbursed for two-thirds of that, right?
Right.
So, we only show a third of that, no? Or it only costs a third?
No, because what, what, what this shows is the whole cost.
It's not net.
It's not netting out the building aid. But if we were to compare it to a district, let's say that has $5 million in capital, well, that's, that's a lot different than 19 million, and, and when you do it, the 19 million comes out to somewhere around, I don't know, $3,300 per student, something like that. So, that's what's factoring into that, a big piece of what's factoring into that.
And that shows up on the revenues?
No, the building aid shows up on the revenues. Building aid's part of state aid.
Right.
Right. Every district gets some state aid. We get more than, than a lot of districts, just quirk in the formula, but we spend, my, my point, though, is not how much we get in building aid, that's, that's part of it, but our entire bond payments and capital projects are included in the cost. And if you were to look at, and if you want to, but, I mean, and it seems like that's what you want to do, compare us to the other districts, and you're highlighting central costs as why we're so much higher, what I would say, what we should then do, the next step, is, well, let's look at, in that same year, the capital and bond payments for those districts as well, and maybe net them out of all of us, and see then how we stack up.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see how-
And then that might highlight-
He does dig in.
Okay, yeah.
So, in terms of those capital and bond payments, if, if that's not, if it's in a separate document that you need to send me, or is that something that you've sent already?
I can, I could take your list and get that information from the other districts.
We did ask for all revenues, I don't remember.
But that's not a revenue.
It may not have been until late last week.
Yeah, I'm just saying, for Three Village, where would I find those line items?
Uh, toward, well, towards the end of the budget, you'll see bond payments-
Okay, yeah, okay.
And capital projects.
Yep. Okay. So, so, yeah, so, there's these general support costs, so these areas that are highlighted in red were the areas that were kind of above the average, and then you have these district academic costs as well, I don't think the bond payments are included in that, in, in the red areas that, the areas in red that where we were higher than, than average, significantly higher than average, were some are programming and services, other district-wide staff, and employee benefits for district academic support staff. So, so, let's kind of move on to the next one.
Wait, can you go back to that?
Yes, again.
Other district-wide staff. Like, what, what is that stuff? Like, what is other district-wide staff? What is that?
Probably like district-wide directors.
Okay.
TOSs.
Could be TOSs, could be, right.
Yeah.
Mentors, mentors, coaches, I don't know if that year we had coaches.
Yeah, so, with, it's a good question, like what's included in that? So, there, there is a very extensive guide, or 120 pages, on how to fill out this form, and it does give guidance as to like what, like budget codes you need to look to, to be able to, to fill out the form and calculate these numbers. However, with things like other district-wide staff, it's not easy to look, I'm not sure if it's even possible to look at the actual budget line item codes and know which ones exactly would fit in there, because there's going to be codes that are broken up, and some of them are going to go in here, and some are going to be allocated to building level, which is kind of another, it's kind of more like a, like if we were to make recommendations in terms of like transparency, we would make recommendations to be able to, to break that out on the actual budget by building, the way it is broken out on, on the state transparency form, so it's easy to match that information up. But again, it is what it is, that we're looking at, you know, historic data, stuff that's been done in the past already.
So, if I, if I didn't think that you love doing this stuff, I would feel bad asking you this question, but would you, would you mind, just because it helps me, I mean, I don't know about it, but just to help me understand it, if, if you could kind of, if you could create like a pie chart, for example, to show us, because I would like to know if some of these are like small potatoes and some are really like bad.
That's in the next chart.
Oh, God, all right, good, way ahead of me. Thank you.
Just keep, just keep one thing in mind, the, the transparency-
It was not a pie chart, though, but okay.
The transparency report from the state is new, so there's a lot of details that need to get worked out with the, the system itself, and every district is kind of, everyone's all across the place with, with doing that report. It was, this might be the first, the one you're looking at might be the first one that was done, and yes, the state puts out guidelines, but not everything fits into the categories as they outline them, and they were, anyone that deals with State Education Department knows they're way understaffed, and they just don't get back to you when you have questions about this kind of stuff, and it was, well, just kind of figure it out the best you can. So, that, this report, the transparency report, will get fine-tuned over, I don't know how many years, but, and so it, so it'll be a better comparison of district to district. It's okay now, but it's not as good as it will be down the road a little bit.
Yep, and, you know, in light of the fact that it's, it doesn't really seem to be very possible to get an Excel spreadsheet of another school district's budget without doing a Freedom of Information Act request, you know, it's, it's hard to do the comparisons. This is a data set that covers every school, so this was one that-
Yeah, that's all you got.
We thought it was one of the useful, yeah, we've, we've done other comparisons as well.
It will be a better comparison a few years down the road than it is right now. It's, it's as good as we're going to get now, but-
So, let's go on to the, to the next slide over here, okay. So, it may be a little bit hard to see here, but you can see that these are, you know, the districts that we looked at, it's the same report, and so, this one is looking at, is looking at the, the, let's see, it's the general support costs section, right? So, it's, it's breaking out these line items. I did not include Board of Ed, because even though we were higher than cohort, it only came out to like $83 a pupil, so I just, I didn't include that inside of the, of the chart. So, so you can see the top line item over here would be Three Village. The blue section in this, in this bar chart, that represents the, the cost per pupil, so $803 for central personnel, right? That's the contribution, 803 per pupil, per pupil. When we look at in the employee benefits piece, it was $846. Plant, which I think is where that bond is, is, is 3,000, right? So, that's, that's a relatively large one, and then this other central services at 780, right? So, you could see for all these other districts, just basically what those numbers were, to run some sort of comparison. I have a, I have another view here, which I think might also, you might find useful as well, Jonathan, because you're, let's see, where is, transparency?
Wonder how much of that green one we get back? Like, if it's a thousand bucks, that's a much lower.
Oh, yeah, well-
If it's a thousand, or three, or it's a third.
Where do we get about 13, $11, $11, no, $11, no.
I don't want to hear what, hear what I say.
There we go.
It's a 13, 13, is it?
Okay, so, oh, let me share, let me share this. Hang on. Okay. general support costs, let's just take a look at, at specifically for Three Village over here, and we'll go to just a little bit of a closer view. Hide that. Okay. So, you can see Three Village is at the bottom of the list over here, I'm just going to sort this, and so, when we look at things like, let me make this bigger, central personnel, all right? So, just to give you some context, like, we're at $803 per pupil, right? So, that scales down, right, all the way down to $248 per pupil. So, this central personnel, it, the average is about 600, like, we're, we're the highest on that one. It's not a huge number, but that doesn't include plant or the bonds, this is just, this is, you know, there may be other inconsistencies here with the, underlying data set, but, but central personnel actually seems like it was one of the ones that was relatively easy to figure out and match to the budget. When we, so again, Three Village is, is the first line over here, you'll see that the operation of maintenance of plant, which I think covers a lot of what you spoke about earlier, Jeff, is probably included in that 3,000, right? Again, this is per pupil. Here's the employee benefits piece, and then here's other central services at, at 780.
I can't really speak enough of the color and represent the degree to which they're-
Yeah, so like, it's, this wasn't really meant for a presentation on a, on a big screen, but, but- but, uh, but, uh, it's, it's, they're color-coded by, by column. So, uh, the reddest item in the column is going to be the highest cost per pupil in that column, okay? So, you know, you'll see that there aren't too many yellows and greens up here, um, when, when we're looking at this particular category.
Yeah, this is not ADA compliant.
It is not ADA compliant, thank you. And didn't know I had to go there. So let's go back to the, uh, to the PowerPoint, uh, slideshow. Okay, so again, this is kind of that, uh, that breakout. Uh, we've gone in, and so, so this was something that we wanted, that, uh, you know, it stood out. Uh, there were, it wasn't just one section in here that was higher than everyone else, it was a lot of sections. Uh, and so this is, like one recommendation we have is, is to actually just take a look at our central costs and, uh, and if there are, you know, outside of plant, right, which is going to, maintenance of plant, which is going to be a lot of those, uh, bond things, uh, uh, figure out if it's possible to be able to actually allocate those costs not at a central level, but at the, at the building level. Uh, so we're more in line with other districts if that indeed is the case. Uh, and, and also it really provides, uh, more transparency. Um, uh, and particularly, uh, if, if that could be aligned with, you know, with how the data is reported and here could be aligned with, uh, with how you code the budgets, uh, because you could always get more granular in your budget coding, uh, to, uh, to align with like what the state is asking, right? So, okay. Right, so this is, I think, the last slide from the transparency report. Um, so this was really just a, another way to show that, uh, that it does seem like our central costs are, are higher. Uh, I, I mentioned earlier that this is done at the building level as well, all right? So in this, uh, in this table, which you don't see the whole table, it's sorted by, uh, elementary school buildings that have the highest percentage of their, uh, uh, costs, uh, tagged as central costs. And, uh, and the universe is those twenty-three schools that we looked at, all their elementary schools, okay? So when we sort that high to low, you could see that, uh, that Mount, for example, like almost thirty percent of their costs are considered central costs. So again, hard to know exactly by looking, uh, at, uh, you know, the budget and whatnot, like, like what those costs exactly are, uh, because they are tagged as central and they're not tagged down at the building level. Uh, but out of those, uh, over a hundred, uh, elementary schools, uh, you know, uh, here are our five, right? So, and three of them are number one, two, and three on the list, right? So, uh, and again, they're not necessarily the highest, uh, cost per pupil on the list, but they're the highest, uh, uh, in terms of the amount of central costs, so they're included into the calculation. This is purely going by the data on the budget transparency, uh, report, so, um.
Oh, that, that is, yeah, sorry about that, oh, yeah, yeah. I just, you know, I just wanted to reiterate that as, as we're doing this analysis, we keep coming back to it, but the under, some of the underlying inputs that we're using are gross expense costs that are not reflective of the large amount of reimbursement. So, you know, we were, we were just talking about those capital costs, for example.
Yeah, s- yep, so.
So if two thousand of the three thousand is coming back, I, I want to see it run again, but with the real number because in a sense, it's sort of, it undermines the validity.
I have to interrupt for a second.
Yeah.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get my head around this.
Yeah.
So we're saying that the cost per pupil for central costs is three thousand dollars, three thousand and three.
Right.
You're saying that the cost per pupil for the bond is thirty-three hundred.
No, what I'm saying is that.
Uh, how can it be included in there?
So, so what I'm saying is that that cost is, it's showing that it's about three thousand per student, let's just say roughly. But actually, on a, and that's true, we do spend that money, but what it doesn't reflect, what that number does not reflect is the fact that on another part of, in, through state aid, we actually get back two thousand of that three thousand.
I understand, so.
So it's not really, it's really one thousand.
So if the cost per pupil for the bond is thirty-three hundred dollars and the cost per pupil that we're showing is three thousand dollars, then we actually have a negative number of cost per pupil?
The central cost total were, I think it was eighty-seven hundred. And of that, it was somewhere around thirty-three hundred of the eighty-seven hundred was related to bond and capital projects.
But you're saying that it's in the, so it's not in the building, so what we're looking at is.
Well, the, the eighty-seven.
That was just the plant cost.
Yeah, if you go back to that other.
So it's not in the plant, it's in someplace else.
Yeah, like if you go back to that one, yeah, if you go, uh, no.
So it's.
Yeah, that one.
It's in something other than plant, I thought that, I thought somebody said it was in.
So if you look at that, if you look at that chart, for example, on the, the blue, we're in line, the yellow, we look a little low, the red one, we look a little high, but those are all.
The blue one were actually the highest.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're highest of blue, and yellow is also, so, so yes, the, the one for plant would probably get diminished quite a bit, right?
Right.
But how much would it be, I don't under, I'm still, how much of that three thousand nine in plant is the bond?
Well, what I'm trying to say is that that cost that we're paying.
Mm-hmm.
We could be, we could, we could, that's something that we're paying out, but we could be getting up to two thousand.
I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I totally understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is if it's third, over thirty-three hundred dollars estimated.
Right.
Where is, where is it here? Because I'm, I'm seeing three thousand.
I would have to look at the report, I don't know.
All right, because I'm.
Wait, I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that number is coming from.
I, I don't see it in that, in here, because that's not high enough.
I don't understand, tell me again, I don't understand the question.
If it's thirty-three hundred is just the bond per student.
We don't know, do we know that, that's thirty-three hundred?
No, I was saying about three thousand, I was just using that green.
Okay, so the three thousand, everything in the plant, everything in the plant is bond.
Comes back is what she's asking.
Is that what you're saying?
A lot of it, that's, I was asking.
So there's nothing else in plant other than bond payments?
That's most of it, that's the, those are the big numbers.
Is that true, Jeff?
I, yeah, probably, yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look up the, I don't, I'd have to look up the report.
I'm just wondering, because I want to make sure what I'm, I want to.
Security, I think, is included in plants as well, is that right?
Yeah, some of it's attributed to schools.
Yeah.
Whether it be custodians, maintenance.
Yeah.
Grounds and security at the schools, and some of it's district-wide, which I, and I would.
Because I'm looking at this and I'm, and I'm in my head trying to take out.
Right.
The plant so that I can compare it, but then I'm thinking, well, if I take out the plant, I mean, the, uh, the bond, then we have not, no other expenses.
Did we get back?
Jeff, Jeff, I think you mentioned this, a number of two-thirds out of ninety million is reimbursable. So I think you should use a two-third factor into that, then you don't get a negative number.
I understand, but Jeff said that this is gross, this, the, the number in the transparency report.
These don't reflect any building aid, right, this is expenses.
Do you remember Ballpark, uh, Ballpark, what did we get back in building aid?
Eleven, eighteen million.
So we can just use that number, so we get about eleven million dollars back in building aid, so that's more of a real number.
Yeah, we can't, because these, Jeff said that this is gross.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that we get back about eleven million dollars in building aid.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if you take eleven million dollars, and that's something that we get, like that's, we get that. So we get eleven million real dollars back from the state against these expenses. And, uh, if you divide that out by fifty-six hundred students, that's about nineteen hundred dollars per student.
I understand, but Jeff said that these, these numbers are gross.
Yes.
Before you take that out.
Yes, before, so you have to take two thousand dollars out of it. Yeah, you're looking at the gross number there.
So this is like, we haven't, so I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
The entire plant expense, because this is gross.
Yes.
The entire plant expense is bond payments, there's nothing else.
No, 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 there's other stuff in there.
Okay, well, I don't understand how then it can be in there.
That includes a whole bunch of things.
The numbers don't, the numbers don't jive.
That includes a whole bunch of things.
Well, I mean, I'd have to look, although that, what makes up that number? I, I can't tell you what makes that number up.
I mean, since we're doing a workshop, I, I flagged the budget codes, if you want, I could pull that up.
All right, but, but.
I, I.
But the point I'm making now is.
I'm just confused because I'm looking at this number and it, and if the, if the bond is three thousand dollars and this is three thousand dollars, then there's, it's showing no other type of, that type of expense.
The bond might not be three, three thousand per, per student.
But, but most of the difference in costs, the difference in central costs between us and the other districts, the, the only point I was making was most of that comes from our buildings and grounds.
Right.
That was what I was saying. And that's where most of the difference is, where we're spending more than other districts.
But the bond is what we get the.
Well, it's bond and capital projects. We spend, in the year of this, we spent about nineteen million dollars in bond and capital projects. I don't know what those other districts spent, I said that before. I can look it up, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can guarantee you, most of them are going to be a lot less than nineteen million.
Is that listed into transparency reports, the line item, the, the, those numbers?
I doubt it. I, I don't, I don't, I don't remember if it is, but I don't think so.
I'm just trying to in my head figure out what this number would look like if we took it out.
Yeah, but you'd have to do it with the other districts as well.
Well, one way that you can look at it is to back out what we know, like a real number that we know we're getting, which is eleven million.
Not, it's not what we're getting, this is gross.
No, but, you know what I'm saying?
What we're getting is not reflected in this.
Well, but if you back out, what, if you back out the rebate that we're getting back, then that can give you some, some idea.
No, but I want to know what makes up the three thousand dollars.
Is, is nineteen million the amount we took the bond out for?
No, 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 that was, no, because this was, Mike, was this twenty-twenty-one or twenty?
This is twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Well, no.
So then, can I look at the budget and?
What, what are the payments we make each year, bond service payments? Is that the nineteen million?
In twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, it was twelve point six million.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we're, we're talking all different things, all right? So it depends on what year we're looking at. In nineteen-twenty, it was about nineteen million dollars in total bond payments and capital projects combined, right? Twelve million and change in bond payments, six point six million in capital projects. We go to this year now, twenty-one, twenty-two, bond's still twelve point something million. Capital projects is zero because our budget failed, so capital projects go to zero. So right off the bat, you're going to see our number drop per pupil spending by over a thousand dollars per student when, when this year is done, when you see final expenses for this year, because we have no capital projects. We had six point six million last year. So if you're looking at a year where we had nineteen million dollars in bond payments and capital projects combined, if you compare that to a district that had five million, well, we're going to be a lot higher in that category per pupil than they are. That's, that's was the point I was making.
Jeff, so on the, so I have the transparency report, I'm, it's on my screen right now, but I could, I could share it. But, um, it, it, it does list that, that the debt service is, um, uh, is an exclusion and is not used in the calculation of the per pupil cost.
It's not, so it's not included in central costs, you're saying?
No, it's not included, it's not included in that, so I could, let me just share, uh, the screen over here. So I'll make this bigger so you can see that, so, so this is the transparency report. Um, and so it's broken out to a few different sections, there's, uh, there's operating funds, so there's a section two. So that's the total amount of district spending allocated to individual schools, okay? Then you have this other section here, exclusions for non-instructional costs, right? So this total number of two hundred and twenty-seven million, right? Uh, you have this twenty-nine million, which is then subtracted from that number, from that two hundred and twenty-seven, okay? So that includes the big line items, could be debt service, transportation, there's just, there's a bunch of factors that are not, that are not used in that calculation, okay? This is a big one, thirteen million right there. Um, when, uh, then there's some additional exclusions for tuition payments to non-district schools. So you have that twenty-nine million for the initial exclusions, another five millions, that's about thirty-four million in total exclusions, right?
What is that, what is that one, that's one that we pay for out-of-district kids going elsewhere?
No, tuition.
BOCs programs.
That we get?
No.
It's an expense?
Oh, that's expen, exclusions from expenditures?
Spend, it's, it's spending, so it says spending, yeah. Um, so when you add those two groupings up, you get about thirty-four point five million, right? That is subtracted from that total of, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven million right here. And the number that you get is a hundred and ninety-two million, and that number is then used to calculate the per pupil cost. So that per pupil cost is then of that thirty-seven thousand, seven fifteen, right? Of that, uh, the general support costs per pupil are, um, are, are fifty-four hundred out of that. Uh, that's under general support costs, uh, then you have these academic support costs, like these are all part of central costs. Um, so, yeah, so it looks like that's an exclusion, it is part of the form completion when you send that in, but it, it's, it's not used to calculate the per pupil cost because otherwise that would be a big discrepancy and that would be a big issue with the report.
Can you send this, can you send this to us?
Yes. Yeah.
And I would like to say, even if it was part of it, all districts have bond payments, so that could be even included to show where we stand because we're still spending money and that's why we have those payments.
Yeah.
In general.
So, Mike, so, Michael, so then what Jonathan was bringing up is not in that chart then, based on this document here?
It's, it's in, it's on the spreadsheet, but it's not used to calculate the per pupil cost.
That you had on the chart we just saw?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, uh, so let me go back into, okay, presentation here. Okay, moving right along here, okay. Uh, so again, we're looking at that per building, um, and again, just, again, it backs up that our central costs are high. Uh, and then, okay, so I'll get a step away from the budget transparency report, I think I've kind of beat that one to death. Uh, and I wanted to just talk a little bit about, um, just another approach that we took when we were looking at, uh, budget expenditures. So, uh, so the table that you see in front of you is kind of just a sampling of some budget codes, um, that, uh, and what you see up here, you'll see that there's, uh, you'll see the departments, uh, and this is the department as per the budget, right? Uh, and then this is the, the line item description as per the budget. And wha- what you see over here is the, the, the first two highlighted columns here, you'll see just the budget number from year to year. So, for example, uh, the, the budget number for music contracted services, not really sure what that is, but, uh, it was eighty-five thousand in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, it was eighty-five thousand for, you know, coming up this year as well. Now, the next section, what you see over here, the, the rest of those cells on that row, that eighty-nine point seven percent, sixty-five percent, seventy-eight percent, seventy-one percent, sixty-four percent, uh, that is actually the percentage of budget that was actually spent, right? So not all the allocated budget, it was overfunded basically, right? Uh, so I, you see there's no twenty-one, twenty-two on here because we don't know how much was spent because it's, the year's not done yet, right? Okay, uh, so we only went up to tw- uh, twenty-twenty-one. So we identified line items, uh, in the budget, some of them are bigger than others, again, this is a sampling, it's not inclusive, uh, where, um, uh, where the budget either went up or stayed the same, uh, even though it's been overfunded, um, historically, okay? Uh, so you, basically what we did was you had to map all the historical budgets together and then map all the budget codes because they sometimes change, and then we just ran this, uh, analysis. So some of them are kind of big line items inside here. Uh, we did notice though, uh, and to the credit of the, the budget makers, that, uh, that there were a lot of line items that were historically overfunded that were reduced, right? I don't have that slide over here, uh, but we did notice that, that there were a fair amount. So it, it looks like that was looked at, right? Uh, but maybe it wasn't a hundred percent inclusive, or maybe there's good reasons, but so, but these are, these are like line items that we see that were, um, uh, that stood out because, you know, like special schools, adult ed contracted services, right? Okay, it's not a huge line item, forty-five thousand, but it's, 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 it's overfunded by, you know, it's double. Like it's double amount of funding then is spent. Um, and again, we didn't, I didn't, we didn't really nitpick with the five and ten thousand dollar line items on here. Uh, we wanted to have some sort of threshold when we looked at this, but again, this is kind of a, a sampling. Uh, you know, things like life insurance, I'm not sure how that could be overfunded consistently, twenty-five percent. I, I see the budget went down from one ninety to hundreds, one hundred and seventy. I don't know how this is calculated, I'm not sure what, how the payouts are determined. Uh, maybe threshold needs to be put in there in the case of emergencies, but it was just, it, just when we ran the data, it jumped out as one that is consistently overfunded, so.
Would it, would, would this reflect if we made transfers out of those lines later in the year?
Uh, uh, so we're looking at what was budgeted, right? And what was. And what was spent, right? So it could have been transferred out, I mean, I would, I'm, I'm sure it was transferred, it had to go somewhere, right?
Right, because we can only hold a certain amount.
Well, well, a budget transfer out doesn't show up as an expenditure. So there are, there are plenty, as you see, budget codes that we didn't spend all the money in there, and some year after year. So just a couple of things about that, that is where fund balance comes from, is from those codes when, when they're underspent. In some cases, we, you know, our goal isn't, is not to spend all of the money that's in the budget. If we don't need the money, I look at that as a good thing, if we don't need to spend the money. And if a, whether it's a principal or a director or whoever has money in their budget, if they say, you know what, I just didn't need it this year, fine, don't spend it, that's a good thing. We're not, you're not going to lose money in next year's budget simply because you didn't spend it all this year. I think that would be, I think that would be counterproductive, I think that would cost money in the long run. There are some codes that, yeah, they're, sometime, like a life insurance, it's not a lot of money. Sometimes the rates drop and it's like, well, we don't know what they're going to do from year to year. So instead of chasing it and reducing it a lot and then having to increase it a lot, well, leave it where it is, because I'm sure there's somewhere else, whether it be health insurance or, or workers' comp or somewhere else within the benefits line, we might need that money anyway. So as, as you mentioned before, we did cut some of those lines in the, the proposed budget for next year. Well, right, and as Ms. Patterson just, just mentioned, in special ed, that's a whole different story. And in fact, in a lot of places in the budget, we like to have those kind of things as, as backup for, we could have one family move into the district with a couple of high-needs kids, and that could be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars like that, that we didn't know was coming. So we, and we can't say, sorry, you're not going to get the services, we didn't budget for them, we have to find them somewhere within the budget. So we need codes like that in the budget that we can tap into if we need to.
But I think that the, what I'm guessing is the concern here is that we're budgeting and that we end up sitting with all this money, but there's, sorry, I'm sorry. I think that the concern is probably that we budgeted for it and then we end the, the, end the year having levied a lot of money that we didn't need, but there's a limit to how much we actually can hold, right?
Sure.
And what is that, what is that amount?
Well, we can have, we can only have, an unreserved fund balance can only be four percent of the budget, so, and we're well below that. So, and mainly because of COVID, we used a lot of our reserves. So we would like to start replenishing that, and in this proposed budget, we have to start paying some of it back. But even in addition to what we must repay, that two million dollars over the next five years, we would like to replenish more of the fund balance and reserves that we used. Should something like a COVID come around again and we need to do the same thing again, we would like to be able to tap into that money as we did last year. And that's, that's what, you know, when we look at things like the fiscal stress report from the comptroller, it all comes down from, from that, from the amount of reserves that we used last year. And we would like to start replenishing that, and that's where reserves comes from and fund balance is the unspent money within the budget.
And if I'm reading this chart correctly, and apologize if I'm not, it's kind of hard to see, Michael, so you did a great job, but it's difficult to see. When, when we look at, in Star Travel, for example, a lot of times we don't know how the students are going to score or, or compete and how well they will do. And that determines whether or not the students will participate in certain activities depending on their standing in different science and math competitions. So that money is put in there to make sure that we do have monies available for those students should they participate. With regard to adult ed services, during COVID, it was difficult to predict whether we were going to be able to offer those services for student, for our community. And so the money was put in there in the hopes that things would open up a bit. As we know, in twenty twenty-one, that didn't really happen the way that we would have anticipated, so some of those monies were also put in there. And as Jeff has explained, in special education, we always have to have enough of a budget. I will tell you a very interesting story that I think is rather relevant. Years ago, when I served in the role that Dawn Mason now has, which is the Executive Director of Pupil Personnel Services, we had, you know, budgetary constraints, and the board said that they would like to cut about, I think it was three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars. And during a meeting, I said, I would advise you not to do that, because we can't anticipate what will happen if we get special education students to come in. Well, it was springtime of that year, and Jay Scotter Friedman was the Assistant Superintendent in Jay's, Jeff's role, and I went to him and I said, we need four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because we just received three different students at different points that needed those kinds of services. So for those reasons, it's so important that we are budgeted appropriately.
Yeah, and I could, and you could see, like, when you look at one of these special ed lines, that, you know, we're looking at, you know, six, forty percent, seventy percent, and then we go up to ninety-one percent, right? So, so now I don't know if the, if we were budgeted less, because I don't have that, that year in this table over here. But, you know, for some line items where, like, for example, like, I don't know, athletic supervision, where we, you know, we barely, we've never broken sixty percent.
With athletic supervision?
Yeah.
And that was because, if you remember, last year, we had a very constricted athletic season?
Yeah, but it was also the year before and the year before and the year before, as I have like, I have five years of historical data.
Sometimes we don't, also, it's, it's similar to instar, we don't know if our students are going to have to go up to the states. So, or whether there will, their season will be extended because of how they do, how they compete and how they, what their standing is in Suffolk and Long Island.
So do you make the assumption that every team will win and go to the states and vote for that?
Well, in Three Village, we certainly do.
So, so Michael.
We certainly do, and I think our record speaks for itself.
So, so looking at these can be a little deceptive when you start pulling out one at a time, but let me give you an example that, in a way that it was explained to me, because this was a concern to me as well when I started to look deeply into this, that imagine you earn, you have a family household income of a hundred thousand dollars, okay? And there is a rule, and you know, most people try to have a little bit of a cushion in savings in case, you know, things happen from, imagine that you're told that of your hundred thousand dollar income, you are not allowed to maintain more than four thousand dollars in savings at the end of the year. That's a very, very thin budget, so, you know, that's a very thin cushion. So you can budget things however you want during the course of the year. You may say, okay, well, we'll allocate, you know, four thousand for this, two thousand for clothing, six thousand transportation, you know, you can, but, but however you want to put those budget lines out there in your household budget, but at the end of the year, you can only finish with four thousand. That's, that's what we.
But we're not in that situation right now.
No, it is, that's, that's, that's the rule, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Jonathan, can I just ask a question? I don't think anybody's saying that we can't have money saved, but I think what they're just saying is that we're talking about having to put money back in the reserves, and we understand that. But if we know that these certain items, I'm not saying special ed, if we're talking about supplies, music contract services, athletic supervision, even if we took ten percent and just said, next year, let's just start ten percent lower, that we're not going to budget forty-five thousand again if we've only spent twenty thousand, let's start at thirty-five thousand. And those, those thousands add up, so I just think that's what they're wondering.
That's true.
There were other, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah.
But, but my question then would be, well, so if we just cut that, those lines, right, which we could, well, reduce them, what do we do with that money we reduced? Is it lower tax levy?
No, it goes back in the reserves.
Oh, well, that's where it winds up anyway, though, and that, that's kind of what I was saying, like, so if we have a code where we spent,
No, lower tax levy.
Eighty thousand dollars, well, and it could be lower tax levy, but then it's not going into reserve. Say that again?
Some of it could be used to lower the tax levy.
Some of it could be, right, but then we're not going to build up our reserves back to where they were either.
But we, we.
Well, we have it in the budget to be putting money back.
Yeah, yes, and that will replenish the two million, right, over five years.
But before, before COVID, we were at the, a good, healthy reserve fund.
Yes.
And these years are before COVID.
Yeah, and, but we used five million dollars of our reserves during COVID.
I understand.
Right.
Right, so we're.
I just want to, just read back to what I'm hearing here as a result of looking at this. So one thing I'm hearing is that the excess is there just in case, in the cases you were talking about, special ed students, that you do get that, which of course, yeah, we want them to be taken care of, and they need to be taken care of. So that's one scenario. The other scenario I'm hearing is that we need this excess just in case. However, when I look at this and I see that year after year after year, the money's not being used, I'm not sure I, I buy into that second thing that you're saying, that's just, am I hearing you correctly?
I understand, and it's, and it's not, each one doesn't have, well, this one is over because of this, and this one's over because of that. I'm just giving examples of why we need some codes in the budget like that. In some cases, it's if something happens. In some cases, it's times when we might need to spend money that we, we, like, like now, we're talking about next year's budget. There are going to be things that happen next year that we're not thinking of now, that we'll need to spend money on, right?
Correct, that would go.
So the money has to come from somewhere, that, that's my point, is the money has to come from somewhere, and it's nice to have some of these codes in there that we know, well, okay, in life insurance, and we know we got some money in there, should something come up and we need it somewhere else.
And just one last.
And if we don't need it and we don't spend it, then it winds up in fund balance.
Okay, so this is another question I have, and, and I'm just, it's just a question about regarding the special ed emergencies or things that do come up, is it possible to have an actual fund or line for that, rather than having to go and pick and say?
Like a petty cash fund.
Well, we, petty cash, petty cash.
Petty cash.
Yeah, two hundred thousand dollars petty cash.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious.
You need to buy a big save. Well, we, we could, but that means taking the money from these codes and sending it somewhere else and saying, special ed contingency. I mean, it's, it's, it's the same idea, we could, we absolutely could do that.
It would be much easier looking at something called an extra fund or slush fund or whatever it can be called, saying that this is the contingency fund, that this is the extra money that we could pull from just in case something happens. And then if we don't need that money, that money goes into our reserves. But going through, you know, six hundred lines and saying, oh, well, this one's up by ten, you know, ten thousand just in case we need it, and this one's up by fifty thousand just in case we need it, it would look better for people that are researching the budget, and probably easier for you too, if it was in one separate line and we can see year to year that we are using the budget itself correctly. And if we're not, then you would really know that, okay, you know, Minnesota key never uses their supply line, so then you would really know that they don't need that, because you don't have any slush money in there, you have it in the slush fund.
So at almost every, at almost every board meeting, we do transfers between budget lines. So are there some budget lines, so that, so we saw that there are a bunch of lines that are over. Are there a bunch of lines that are, that are under, because we're always transferring money? So there's a, there's a separate parallel set of ones that are?
For instance, and let's just take one department, the technology department in our secondary buildings. The cost of a two-by-four went up by four times as much money this year.
Right.
So we couldn't have anticipated those rising costs last year. So we had to transfer money over to other codes or other codes to cover the cost of the wood, otherwise the students in the wood program couldn't build the projects that they had.
But to the, to the point that Karen, I mean, are there some that are routinely underfunded though, that we're consistently making transfers to? Or is it just some of the vague?
Yeah, you know, so, so we did look at that.
I, I would not say consistently.
Yeah, we did, we, we looked at that as well, so we did get the budget transfer line items, and we coded all those and matched those up to the budget. And it, it wasn't consistent, like, I couldn't go in and say, oh, okay, this extra money allocated for a special ed is consistently going over to here. We didn't, we didn't really see that, we did see a lot of moving around and things that come up.
How much, how much money, how much got moved? Roughly, if you know.
Michael, I have a similar question, for overbudgeting, do you have a dollar amount each year, how much we overbudget each year overall?
Yeah, that's pretty close.
Yeah, I think, I was going to say, that, that, I think, in my opinion, that's, that's the key number to look at. Each year's budget, what was the, compared to the budget, how much was spent total? Well, this code was over, this one was under, that kind of thing, I think the key number is at the end. And if you think it makes it clear, if we just try to budget each individual code, not anything more than is needed, and take all the extra and put it in one code and divvy it up as needed, I mean, we could do that.
But you don't know where it's coming from or going, so it kind of doesn't.
It's going to mean a lot of budget transfers, but we could do that.
Right.
But I think, I think, I think the key number to look at though is, is, the most important is what was budgeted and what was spent. If we spent five million dollars less than was budgeted each year, I couldn't argue with you, but that's not the case. You look at a lot of districts, that is the case, and I can show, give you lots of examples of it. But that's not the case here. We don't spend, underspend the budget by millions every year. I mean, I would, ideally, I would like to want, you know, a couple of million, because two million is only one percent of the budget, two point two million.
Do I have a question? The budget transfer data that you sent us, and I was trying to find this email. I had questioned you, it said, it doesn't seem to have all the budget transfers in there, and you mentioned that there was another document that had other?
Open POs?
Would that be it?
That was, right, you would answer the budget transfers and then said it didn't seem to add up to the adjustments column.
Didn't add up.
What's, it shows up in the adjustments column of the report that I gave you was the, is the purchase orders that are open as of June thirtieth in the year. Meaning something was ordered, right? For whatever reason, we haven't paid the final bill yet as of June thirtieth. It could be that the stuff was delayed, we didn't get the invoice yet, for whatever reason. It, it wasn't paid for yet as of June thirtieth, but it's still something that we're in purchasing. So that purchase order gets carried over to the next year, and it shows up as an adjustment in, in that adjustment column. Same column that the budget transfers show up, but they don't, budget transfers net out to zero, the adjustments don't. It's a one dollar amount that gets carried over June thirtieth from the prior year into the new year.
But were, were you able to get a sense of how much we're transferring roughly?
Uh, yeah. I just happen to have a spreadsheet for that. Okay, so if we want to look at budget transfers for, let's see, where's the master? Budget transfers, here we go. All right, let's look at. So say we look at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, because that's the last year of full data. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-five, so that's about point, point zero one percent, or is that point one percent, it's point one percent? No, one percent would be two million.
Yeah, tenth of a percent.
It's a tenth, so a tenth, so point one percent of our budget is, was over, and then, okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of the scale of what we're talking about.
Yeah, and so.
It's not a lot. And so, and so, and so all of the rest of the stuff that was over, you know, that was over, overfunded, let's say, except for less than four percent of it, all of it would have been swept back into the reserves anyway, because we can't hold it.
Right.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
If a line item was underfunded on the budget and we end up spending more than was budgeted for, would there be a transfer to account for that?
It has to come from somewhere, yes, it has to come.
There would be, okay.
It has to get covered by, from somewhere.
So there were two hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff that was probably underfunded, I'm guessing, right, because that's why we transferred it? Right, or things came up or whatever.
Something that wasn't, yeah.
Well, prices came up, but we couldn't pay them because that line didn't have enough in. Yeah, so we underfunded it. I'm just trying to get a sense of the scale, because, to guide us to what to really look, look at.
Right, so like, one of the, this is just one of the things, we're trying to give you targets that can help you.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, this is very useful, this is incredibly useful.
Because of the overall criticism is that you're spending a lot of money.
Right, yeah.
So, so saying, hey, we spent all the money in the budget, we spent all the money, doesn't necessarily help the argument.
Right. Right.
So, so does the BAC have things they want to talk about now that you've seen the budget that has been proposed?
No, I'm not done. No, that's what we're getting into right now.
Yeah. Okay, that was the introduction. Let's begin.
That was 1A. We're up to 1B now.
All right, so the next slide we, that I have up here, so this shows the departments that have the biggest increase in budget or some of the larger, some of the larger budget increases. So, now, you know, we just got the budget and then there were a bunch of questions. So, we just got the staffing report. We had a bunch of questions. So, have we spent as much time going through all the line items as we would have liked to? No. But we do, we do have two slides. So, so these are, these are departments. So, Department 1625, Safety and Security, that's a 9% increase. So, like, these are things we would, we would have questions as to, well, like, why are we seeing these large increases over here? You know, we, again, we haven't necessarily gone into all the line items. The next slide will go into some of them. But, you know, these were ones that just stood out that we thought maybe worthy of an explanation, like transportation from Bosie's, like, why do we say, see such a, you know, like a $400,000 increase over there? And then there was also a line item that hadn't shown up before, which was recreation, under recreation, under travel conferences for 120,000. And I'm not really sure what that is, so that one. We haven't seen that budget code, that specific code before. I have the specific code on the next slide, but, you know, those are things that?
That's travel camp this summer.
Oh, it's, so that's?
It hasn't been for two years. And it's a great camp.
For two years?
Yeah, 1920, yeah, 1920, 20 summer and 21 summer.
Was that budget code rolled up into another code in the past because it doesn't show up going back to 2016? All right, hold on. Yeah, so I, and I could, so? Something to look at. Thanks, Carman. So, again, like, again, we don't have to address all these right now, but like, these are ones I think we would, people in the community would be like, well, why is curriculum and development supervision seeing a 12% increase? I mean, not a bad thing. We like that stuff, but, you know, what's the, what's the driver behind that? And again, so this, I'll make this presentation available to everyone after. Okay, so if you couldn't read the other one before, you probably won't be able to read this one. But what we're looking at over here, so this is, this is the budget.
Before you go on with that one, since that's my code, we're doing AIS this year that we didn't do last year because the state tests are now on. The state tests weren't on last year.
What's AIS?
State assessments. We do AI, academic intervention services for students. So, that's why that increased this year.
That's that budget code?
Yes, for academic, when we?
And the region's exams.
Region exams, if we have region's exams, we have, all the region's exams are gonna be on for this June. We only had four last year. So, that was, if you went back that slide, whatever.
So, why is that under recreation?
No, wait, I'm sorry. It's under recreation. You said curriculum development supervision.
Gotcha. Yep.
By the way, summer rec travel has been, was 120,000 in 1920. In 1920, it was 120,000. The 2019, 2020 school year. I mean, clarify, I'll clarify. 1920, yes. 1920.
That's correct.
Well, in 1920, we did because that's, no, 19, no, 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 no. The 2019, 20 year is the summer of 2000, would be summer of 2019.
What's the, what's the line item called?
The school year starts July.
What's the budget line item called, did you say?
The summer rec travel.
Summer rec travel.
That counts the summer before. That happens before the AIs.
Well, our year starts July 1st. Our year starts July 1st, right. So, summer of 2019 was in the 2019, 20 school year.
So, we're not seeing?
What I'm saying is it's not a new thing.
Oh, I know. Yeah, but when we were looking at it, when we were talking, that specific line item, and there's a couple of other ones, that we get revenue for that line item. It almost zeroes out, but we don't see that revenue in the budget that you presented us. So, we're kind of missing that piece. So, there are a few things that we do get reimbursements for, like the bonds, but we don't see that when we're working out budget and SAC and a whole bunch of other things.
Adult Ed.
Right, Adult Ed, and that is a self-sustaining program.
I see that, by the way. Yeah, that's right. It wasn't in last year's, but it was in prior years at 120,000.
And transportation for Bosie's programs would be students that are going off to Bosie's programs outside the district, which has increased from this year to next year. Some of that's based upon CSCs and some of that's based upon students' interest in some of the programs.
Is that why that's so much higher? So, that's really student run, like student need run driven, I meant to say. Okay.
So, I have a question about that. So, if we've seen such a significant increase in that kind of want, would we maybe explore then looking at those types of programs in district?
It depends on the programs. You have to remember that some of the programs that Bosie's offers, and they have some wonderful programs, it would cost us millions of dollars to start like an automotive program that would be a level three that would give us students a certificate for automotive tech to be able to go and get a job in an automotive shop later on. So, that would not, that would be cost prohibitive for us. But those expenses could be due also to a special needs child going to a special program that is CSC driven or it could be interest-based. Sadly, because of the way our schedule works, we only go to Bosie's programs in the afternoon, not the morning. So, we're out of that, and that's been for years. Like, Cheryl, let's?
Yeah, we, there was only one time where they were in the morning. But also, we had explored at one time developing a cosmetology program here in Three Village. We did not have the student interest in order to sustain it.
Then we were looking into culinary if that was successful, but we didn't even get past the first one. It was a lot of, a lot of hours on that committee and we were all excited and then the survey went out.
Right. We, we don't have a large number of our students in the Bosie's programs, but we do find it to be very valuable for those students who have interest.
Absolutely.
So, can we go on to the next? Yep, okay. This is the last slide, actually. Okay. Can you make some more? It was, it was 6:40 this evening and I was like, I guess I gotta go.
Your employer must love you.
I do a lot with data for them too. So, so, yeah, so like, we, we started going through the budget and line item by line item, basically just looking to see where there were a large percentage increases and where there were large dollar increases. You know, there were large dollar increases in a lot of like instructional, but, but there were dollar increases, not, not big percentage increases. So, it could have been a large dollar increase, but only like a one and a half percent increase. We know the teacher's contract stipulated like a 3.5% increase, so that seemed okay. But we, you know, we, like, the top ones over here were just kind of a sampling of ones that we highlighted. Like, any of them that are highlighted on the left are ones that we're looking at. These were some that I highlighted a second time at 6:40 this evening. So, so, you know, these were, you could see this was, this is the proposed number over here. This is the, the last year of budget number, right? And, and this is the, the increase from just a pure dollar perspective. So, these are, again, this is the one we just spoke about, transportation. We also spoke about curriculum development supervision was one of the other line items. So, those two we could, we could check off. But, you know, there are other ones over here, and again, this is just, there's, you know, there are other ones that we probably want to explore. A lot of them we highlighted and then we went into the staffing document, then, which, which is very helpful that it's linked to budget codes because then we were able to link it back to the budget code over here. We were able to see that, oh, okay, it looks like there was, you know, what we saw decreases. It seemed to line up with maybe there was a, you know, we also mapped it up to the class size report. So, we saw that there were class sizes that were, that were 10 or fewer with a bunch of classes. But then we went to the budget. We saw that like that line item code was actually reduced, we're guessing to account for the fact that, you know, there could have been four sections of a class and there were, you know, averaged like 10 students per class. That could account for a teacher being moved around or a headcount being moved around to another department. So, so we were able to kind of rule out a lot. And again, it really just highlights the importance of having good data and not only having good data, but being able to access it easily, which it's been a challenge for, for us. And it sounds like it's been a challenge for you guys as well and we are extremely appreciative of, of the quick responses that we've been getting for the most part. But there seems to be maybe an underlying challenge here with being able to kind of pull data that's, that's mapped to budget codes across different systems that you use here at the school. And again, I'm not sure if that's something that's just the way it is in schools or if there are, if there are, you know, like, software changes and integrations that are connecting, you know, the staffing system and the budget system and all these disperse, disparate, you know, programs that track this information. So, so again, like, there were some other line items over here. Again, safety and security, we spoke about already that we saw a big increase in that. You know, there's Bosie's personnel. It's a 55% increase. That seems fairly significant, but that could be a headcount. It's 120,000. You know, instructional salaries for special school, summer readings, like, these are just ones that we, that kind of stand out as having big increases. And, you know, we, you know, we, we do know that we're coming off a COVID year, so some, that could account for, for some of it. But, but, yeah.
Yeah, so like, security, for instance, that, that is just growing and growing and growing and growing. I mean, every time we, kids are going on trips now, we have to send security. A lot of that is just based on what the world is like right now. We feel much better having security accompanying all of our field trips. We have a lot more security in our buildings than we ever had. If you remember, it wasn't even all that long ago. We didn't have security in our elementary schools. Now, we have a security team at each elementary school. That, that's just growing and growing. The, the, yeah, the surveillance cameras do. We have a lot more of those than we ever had. The transportation, the Bosie's transportation, that's just based on, on need. And that's one that we, we kind of, we kind of chase each year. So, it could be a few kids came into the district this year for, or changed, you know, wherever they're going to school and, and depending on where it is and what buses are available, one child can cost 50 or 70 or 80,000 dollars a year to transport. I mean, it's just, just the way it is. And we did, that's done through Bosie's. Now, hopefully, we get to next year and we don't need all that money in that code because that, the amount of the increase is based on the kids that we have right now, assuming they're going to be here and in the same schools next year. We don't know that. There could be more. I mean, it could go that way too. But we always, that's one we always have to chase. Sometimes it, it could drop precipitously because a couple of kids might age out or move out or whatever or change, change school that they go to and it can drop like that, just like it can increase drastically overnight too.
So, the number one on the list right there, last year, we started for the first time because of the response with a number of students that were lagging behind in math, a summer math AIS support program for kids going into first grade all the way up to sixth grade. That number was probably under a different salary code because it was the first year of the program. And for whatever reason, it was just lumped into the summer reading program. It really should probably be summer reading and slash math program. We've always run a K through 1 summer reading program for years here, since my 10 years being here. We expanded to level, grade 2 last year again because of what we were seeing with some of the students coming back off of COVID and some of the students that were on remote instruction having, lagging behind in some areas. So, we wanted to give those extra supports. So, that's why that number has increased exponentially in that category. It was attributed into another code and then rightfully put into this code, but the code just has to be renewed.
So, is a budget, budget presentation put together and present to the community that actually has those descriptions, descriptions like that? Is that something that is typically done? Because all I, all I see is the numbers, so?
Yeah, well, what we've?
That would explain things that are different from this year to, to, yeah, next year, yeah.
Right. Often in the budget presentations, when we have those meetings later?
Yes.
Oh, yep, I'm sorry. Thank you for signaling to me. Often when we do the budget presentation, I'm pointing over there because that's where Jeff's sitting when he does it. So, so Jeff will, will often go through it and we usually go around to all the, all the PTAs and we go around to the civic association, all the, you know, different groups and talk about all these kinds of things. Sometimes at a pretty high level, you know, we, varying levels of granularity, but we do try to address what the big changes are.
Yeah, that's usually the, you know, I talk about state aid, what the tax increase is going to be, changes to staffing, any new programs or if we're eliminating any programs or services. That's typically our budget presentations. I will tell you that years ago, we used to do, they used to be a lot longer, a lot more in-depth. We have more people and?
Individual directors.
We would have directors and principals and they would come. And the one, it was consistent across the board from everybody was, "That's great, except way too long. Can you just tell us how much the budget's going up and what our taxes are gonna do and if you're adding any new programs?" So, that's, we changed budget presentations to reflect that, so.
I have a question. Do you know the percentage of the community that does come out and vote for the budget? Percentage of people that do come out?
Of the registered voters?
Of the registered voters?
Weren't there about 10,000 people that voted last year? Am I, am I right? Or was it the year before?
The year before.
The first vote had about 3,000.
Because it was?
That was the nail.
And it was like 30%?
It was like over 9,000.
Yeah. Yeah, it varies probably between, you know?
15% maybe?
Last year was less than 10%, less than 10%. Yes, usually it's around 2,000 to 5,000 people. And the total voting people around the 30%.
10% of the community generally votes.
Registered voters.
Registered is approximately 30,000, a little less.
So, like 10 to 15% probably, something like that?
Okay.
Typically lucky.
It varies.
Just a question on that. I know FOIL requests have been done for the, like, list of people who voted for the budget. What information is provided on a FOIL request if we request the names of those who voted?
You'll get them.
But what's included? Is it just name? Is it, is it, you know?
Name and address?
Social security number.
No, social security number.
Got it.
Mothers made name.
Names and addresses, right?
Yep, okay, cool. Just one other thing. I don't have a slide for this. And again, it has to do with making life a little bit easier for people like me that, and us, on this group over here, to go through the budget, and that is providing granularity on the, on the budget. And I mentioned it one of our meetings before, but, so in our, in our budget, we have 463 different line items, right? So, Middle Country has 1,292 line items. Sager, which has a ton of elementary schools, is around 650. But Northport's 1,100. Connect Quads, about 830. Comax, 680. There, a lot of the light items in the budget, we're doing it, by the way, the way the state says you should do it. You know, there's a, there's like a minimum threshold, they say, that these certain codes need to be used, but then there's like a lot of leeway given after that. But some districts have taken the approach where they have actually gone in and provided a lot more detail and provided like subcodes, you know, within the, within the code string, you know, for things like contracted services. Like contracted services, we really have absolutely no clue what that means, right? A lot of the budgets that we've looked at actually will put a descriptor next to what the contracted services actually are or at least a grouping. They'll also provide things like separate line items for, you know, for the, for, for teachers by grade in the school, in the budget. And they'll do it for different types of staff in the school. So, you see a separate line item for the principal. So, we don't necessarily see all those broken out to that degree. I think that would be very helpful just from a transparency perspective, you know, we've, you know, I've never really thought that anything funny was going on, but it, I think, when you provide more transparency, it, it, it makes people more comfortable, you know? Because we are, we do pay a lot of taxes.
Is that transparency or granularity that you're looking for? Because the idea about the, let me just address the grades for a second. If, as a former building principal, Dr. DeBruski was a building principal as well. If I have seven grade levels and I have a supply code, it's going to go where the needs are for each grade level. We're not going to necessarily divide up the money evenly. You might have one grade level with 500 students and another grade level with 200 students in it. So, it's not going to be?
Supplies is not done that way, but staffing is being, yeah.
Staffing's a different story, but, yeah, but, you know, if you're talking about that type of granularity? that type of granularity, that, from a principal standpoint, that limits you in what you can maneuver. And then, and then when you talk about your budget transfers, the number of transfers are going to increase exponentially. As I mentioned in our last meeting about the textbook code, so, when we were talking about the textbook code, several of the school districts will do textbook code by grade level by building. However, we do, when we buy new textbooks here, our procedure, and it goes back to when I was a teacher here as well, new textbooks are centralized. So, the central costs that you're referring to go up very high, because we're not contributing it to a particular school. What that does for us is we get the books much cheaper than we would if we tried to separate every single purchase order by building and code.
Right. It sounds like you purchase them that way, but on the, on the budget, they're actually allocated by the school?
Not for new textbooks. That comes out of my budget code. And I haven't done it by school since I've been here. So, we may break it out after the fact.
Maybe it's broken out after the fact.
Yes, but it comes all out of one code, all the money is spent out of one code. Replacement books come out of the particular building codes. So, if we have, like, a series of books and five of them are damaged this year and we have to replace five, that's going to come out of the building code. So, I'm just, I'm just for clarity purposes, not an argument, just to present, like, is that, is that what we're looking to do, to have more codes so that we eliminate? Or, but that's not transparency, that's more of, you're looking for, how much do we spend in first grade, second grade, is that what we're looking to do? Or is it more?
I mean, more granularity is good. For example, a lot of budgets, a lot of budgets will have line items for things like subscriptions, right? We don't see line items for subscriptions. So, that would be an example, yeah.
So, so I do want to go on to, I'm sorry.
While we're talking about line items, I just have, could I just have a quick explanation on just a couple of line items that I'm not, I don't understand what they are? Admin longevity? If you could just let me know what it is.
In our administrative.
Not the amount, not just the, like, the description of the account.
Not how much it is, she's asking, just what it is, what does that mean?
Yeah, it's, in our administrator's contract, they receive a longevity amount for, depending on how long they've been working in the district, and that gets coded to that.
Like a staff.
So, yeah, if you've been working here 10 years, for example, you might get $1,500.
So, what would account for the huge increase? That was the one that had the big line item increase from like 400,000 to like 1 and 1/2 million?
No, that was the, that was the separation pay, which includes vacation, because some of our employees get to sell back unused vacation days.
Yep.
And then some get paid out days when they retire for vacation, or if there's a retirement incentive. That's all in that code.
So, this year, because it was such a huge increase, it was the retirement incentive?
Yes, that's, that's most of that increase.
Because it was from, you know, very large, okay.
No, it's going up.
Yeah.
An increase. It was from 490 to 1.9 million for next year.
Yes, right.
Correct, an increase, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's anticipated, retirement.
That many?
Yeah, and that's, which is going to save a lot of money. It's actually saving more than that on salaries.
Yeah, we're assuming next year will be, or that's when we're retiring this year?
That's retire, well, kind of, some of both.
Oh, good, then we won't have, have an increase.
So, we're looking at that, we're looking at the separation. Let's worry about that next year.
We're looking at the, now I'm going to ask you a timing question. So, the, the incentives, incentive pay is paid next year, because we're also seeing a, a pretty significant decrease in a lot of salaries, both instructional and non-instructional.
Right, we're paying.
So, I was assuming that a lot of that was because of retirement.
Exactly. Yes.
And then they're getting.
And we'll be paying the incentive out in July.
And it's still, it is a decent savings.
Yeah, yes, yes.
When I analyze it.
Any of the incentives that, that we have, that the board has agreed to in any of the contracts, more than pay for themselves within the first year of retirement.
Yeah.
And that's been something that the board has always.
I was a little questioning about that, but then I looked at the numbers, it really did come out that way.
Yeah.
And then the $400,000 transfer to the capital fund. Is that, because.
That's for projects, and I think I had mentioned that at one of our previous meetings. What our plan for that is to do a handicap accessible playground at Arrowhead. And also, if we do, if we do outside work at a building all by itself as a capital project, we don't get building aid on it. But if we tie it to a project inside the building, then we get building aid on the whole thing. So, we're also, and works out conveniently, Arrowhead needs a new gym floor. So, we're going to do with that capital project money next year, a new gym floor and a handicap accessible playground at Arrowhead.
So, out of the 400,000, talking about building, and we're going to get 2/3 back of that 400,000?
Yeah, not immediately.
Eventually. How long?
Over 15 years.
15 years?
Yes.
Oh, it's advertised.
But that's, but that's the way all of our capital projects work.
Okay, and it's advertised, we get a little bit each year.
Yeah, exactly. So, the way capital project, it used to be, if you're old in days, you would do, you'd spend the money this year, you'd get the aid back the following year. But then they changed it to, they call it assumed amortization, where they pay it off depending on the type of project, either 15, 20, or 30 years. This would be 15 years. So, we'll get the, the 2/3 of the aid back over 15 years. Bonds are a little different. Bonds, we get the 2/3 in the same year that we make, of the bond payment, in the same year we make the bond payment.
Okay.
And we get it on principal and interest, the 2/3, the 66%.
You know, I'll just, just because I can't, I can't resist saying it, but, but, you know, the retirement incentives are not necessarily an article of faith. And yes, although it is true that in theory, if you're making $150,000 a year, or let's say $200,000 a year, and I pay you $50,000 to quit so that I can hire someone at 100,000, yeah, in theory, we're, you know, there's a, there's a cost savings there. However, over a long enough time period, all of those people, you can say that they all would have retired anyway. And so, all of those hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars that get paid out in retirement incentives are, in a sense, over the long term, right? So, it's not, it is a topic for discussion and debate, and maybe you can guess what, what my feeling is, but it's in the contract and.
So, what you mean, so what, are you saying that they would work longer and it would cost more money? Or the incentive gets them out, or it costs less money?
In theory.
I'm just trying to clarify.
In theory.
It saves money, basically, because those same teachers might teach three or four more years at the 200,000.
Maybe.
Yeah, but you're paying in today's money.
Maybe.
Not tomorrow's money.
Maybe. Or maybe people, when they're ready to retire, are just going to retire, especially if there's not, I mean, look, it's, as I said, it's, it's a topic for discussion.
Say what you really want to say.
Most of the people who took the retirement incentive, how close to retirement, and in the contract, how long, you know?
Okay, so.
They're eligible.
So, are.
They're eligible. Yeah. Yeah, they can only get it if they're eligible to retire.
All right, so.
They could have retired tomorrow anyway.
Right.
Well, right, I mean, they wouldn't get the, well, they have to, they have to be eligible to retire to get the retirement incentive. If somebody just says, somebody's, you know, 42 years old and they've been working here for 10 years and says, you know what, I don't feel like working here anymore, I quit. We're not going to give them a retirement incentive. It's only, part of the incentive in the contract is that they actually have to be eligible to retire from the teacher's retirement system and take retirement. They start collecting a pension. They can't leave here and go work for another district and get the retirement incentive. They have to actually retire.
It's not just age, it's years of service.
Right, years of service in the district, years of service in the retirement system. And then there's, there's, there's what's called first eligible to retire without penalty in the retirement system. We'll go into all the specifics of that, but they have to fit all those criteria. And then, they have to go in that year they're first eligible. Now, this year that we're in right now, it's, this is a new, a different type of, the incentive, the teacher's retirement incentive that was in the last teacher's contract ended with that contract. This is a different one. It makes, so, for this year, it makes everyone first eligible again, even if they previously passed on a retirement incentive. For this year, because it's the first year of the new contract. We can't exclude the people who are too old, right? Right, that would be discriminatory, an age discriminatory. So, they have to be included for this year only. Now, when we go to next year, the year after, the year after, the year after, it's only those who first become eligible. If somebody is eligible to retire now, without penalty, not, right now, this year, and they choose not to, they go next year, they're not going to get the incentive. They go the year after, they're not going to get it. It's only if they go in that first, first, this year.
First year of the new contract.
If they're already eligible, first year of this new contract.
Right.
After this year, though, it's only those who become first eligible.
On that year.
Forever and ever.
Right.
On that year, get it.
Only get the incentive your first year.
First year of being eligible.
Right.
If you choose not to go that year, you're not going to get it.
And we have.
Forever and ever, unless it's changed in the new contract.
Teachers that are foregoing this incentive, meaning they can get this bonus, I call it bonus. And they're saying, you know what, keep it, I still want to teach.
Yeah, there's some people who, right, exactly.
That says a lot, I think.
Because it's contracted, so it's really not.
They're never going to have that opportunity again.
Can I just, before we finish?
Until next contract.
Right.
Because then they can, they can get it then.
Well, no, you have to.
Because this doesn't. You just said that.
No, 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 this, this time only, because it's a, it's, it's worded differently.
So, on the next contract.
No, 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 but, in this contract, that.
It's not age discrimination in the next contract.
It's not. It's not, because they have the opportunity this year to take it. Right now, they can take it. So, even in the, the next contract, unless it changes. Now, if the, if the board agrees to changing it, well, you know, that's a different story. But the incentive that's in place now, when this contract ends, unless the board agrees to change it, it remains in place in the new contract, right? Because it doesn't, what's called sunset. It does not sunset.
So, it changed in this contract.
It changed in this one, which made everyone first eligible.
What changed?
Well, the, well, 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 not letting it sunset for one, right. But in the previous contract, and what's always been for, I don't know how many years back, in every teacher's contract, the incentive that was in there ended with that contract. If you look at any one of the teacher contracts, it specifically says, this retirement incentive ends with this contract. So, the subsequent contract, even if the incentive that was in there, if there was one, was identical to the previous contract, it's still technically a new incentive, because the old one ended. And because it's a new incentive, everyone becomes first eligible again, right? Because it's a new incentive, even if it's identical, it's a new incentive. And this contract, the one that the board approved this past, last year for the teachers, it does not sunset anymore. So, that means unless the board specifically agrees to change it, they only have, everyone has the one time this year, meaning this year, this coming up June, to take, if they were previously eligible, eligible, to take it, otherwise, they will not get it going forwards, even in the first year of the next contract.
So, this 1.2 million won't be hit every year?
Oh, well, it might, because, you know, so, so it's going to happen, what's going to happen, we have a.
Right.
Right, so we have a.
So, next year, if there's 20 teachers, they could retire.
Right, we have a very senior teacher staff, right? So, so in, in our teacher's contract, there are, in the salary schedule, there are 30 steps, right? We have, 54% of our teachers are at step 25 and higher. It's a very senior staff. So, that's part of why when we look at per pupil spending, if you took another district that had a much more junior staff, even if everything was the same, class size, course offerings, electives, everything, same exact number of teachers for the same number of students, but had a much more junior staff, they'd be spending a lot less than us, right? So, but what that means, what that's going to mean is in a few years, and there's no magic, I can't tell you what year, but coming up in a few years, we're going to see a lot of teacher retirements, a lot.
Oh, we saw a lot.
Well, no, I mean, we're going to see a lot.
No, there's more.
Because if you go back, if you go back to the late 1990s, right, or, yeah, mid, mid 1990s, is when there were probably 50, 60, 70 teachers hired each year. Well, you get 30 years later, now in the mid 20s, they're going to start retiring. We're going to see that in a few years, I don't know exactly when, there'll be numbers like 50, 60 teachers retire each year, which, and if they go in their first year of eligibility, they'll get the incentive. But if they don't go in their first year, they retire sometime later, they won't get the incentive. But either way, it will be a significant cost savings to the district. If 50 teachers retire, even if every single one of them is replaced, add somebody making $100,000 less, that's $5 million. So, that's what's coming down the road. Doesn't help us today, but it's coming.
Can I just ask a staffing question? So, in the paper that you gave us, you're saying that you had an IT admin who was making 155,000, but now for next year, they're not here, and they're going to consolidate those administrative responsibilities. But looking at the budget, it looks like in your central processing for IT that you're adding $159,000 for next year. Does that mean that you're hiring a new staff member there?
We're not hiring a new IT. We're not replacing.
No.
That's 1680, 1600.
The person you're replacing, I'll get to the breakdown of those.
Okay, just want to understand what the increase.
That one is not being replaced.
Right, but the increase in that budget line item, it looks like it's a person.
I see what you're saying. I'll, I'll get that, I'll get the breakdown of those for you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
I just wanted to, did you have something that you were going to talk about prior?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt just for a second, Rihanna? Rihanna, if you look at page 7, last line on there, in the function code 2630, there's a reduction of 153,000. That, that makes up for the other one.
Right, yeah, that's what we're trying to understand, just, is that, in that 1680, though, that one's reducing, you're instructional, but in the 1680, the IT one, is that a new position that's being created? Are they taking?
No, no, we're not creating any new positions.
We are not replacing that position.
Okay, so then why would we have to add 159,000 to that one code for salary?
I think we're moving the one from, one, something from one to the other. But I will get the breakdown of both. If you net those two codes together.
What's the other 20?
2630, it's the bottom of page 7.
Anybody else have any questions or suggestions?
I'm sorry, were you starting a question? I interrupted.
Yeah, I just wanted to see.
So, time, thank you. Time may not permit us to go through, to go through this right now. But I can tell you that, at least for me, you know, so, all of us, we've all, we've all found this very valuable, and the work, and the work of the, of the committee very, very valuable, to help us identify where there are potential costs. And especially, you know, more this, more this than the, than the other, than the other thing. Because ultimately, a budget, you know, there's that old saying where it says, show me, show me your budget, for any organization, show me your budget and I'll tell you what your values are.[1670.12] values are." Sometimes, there are things that, as a board, that we've said that we want to do, whether it's anything, or just things that we've wanted to look at, anything from changing the start time in schools, or to, to adding programs, and the answer is often, "Well, you know, we don't have the money for that." But there is money, there is money. So, the question is figuring out, what is it that we're spending money on? And that's what, one of the things that, at least for me personally, you guys going through this to that level of granularity, to help us see where are we spending money, so that we can start to have those conversations, so that we can understand as a board, that every single one of these expenses is a choice we're making. We're choosing this and not that. We're choosing this instead of an earlier start time. We're choosing that instead of teaching foreign languages at the elementary school, for example. That's something that a number of us have been interested in for years, that we would like that, but we were told that, I mean, not, you know, I don't mean that, but, you know, we were, we understood that for budgetary reasons, and that was not feasible. But really, it is, right? Because there's always a choice that can be made. And so, I, you know, I, I'm sure I'm speaking for all of us, that we found this very valuable, and it helps us ask those kinds of questions, and hopefully, as we move forward, the types of programs, I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to do this to necessarily cut the budget. That's not what necessarily, what the point of this exercise is, in my mind. The point of this is to make sure that the money that we have been entrusted by the community, that we're using it to create the best academic program possible, and delivering the best value to our students. So, you know, we, so I, I think that unless anyone else has stuff that, that you want to add, I think that as we go back now and talk with administration, we're going to take a hard look at some of these things that you've recommended, and we're going to start to have those conversations about how can we express our values, and the things that we've heard from you, the things we've heard from students, you know, Will, Will, I mean, I appreciate your perspective, and you have, you've sent us emails, and you've, I know you've been quiet, because it's hard, maybe, but you, you've pointed out a lot of things that have been valuable to us as well. So, I'm very appreciative for all of the hard work that you've all done, thank you.
Thank you. Before we wrap up, I just wanted to hear back from some of the board members about what they heard tonight, and, so that we know that we're getting our ideas and messages across to you. I don't know if I fully agree with Jonathan on not cutting, because I think that was one of the things that some of us, I won't speak, I'll speak, you know, for some of us, we were looking for maybe some more cuts. But I'd like to hear some other voices that I haven't heard this evening, in terms of their response to all the work that's been done, because it was, it was a great deal of work for many people.
I'll just...
Sure.
I thought you did a phenomenal job. When I got this in the mail, I looked at it, and I even shared it with my wife, and I said, "These are some of the things that we have to look at. Some of the things you have there are right on target, that I would look at as a board member and say, 'Let's try to move toward it.'" What Jonathan was saying is that if we take some of the things that, maybe down the line, we rearrange them, because I was a foreign language teacher here for many, many years, pushing for foreign language in elementary school for a long time. So, if we maybe rearrange some of this, or some of this, maybe we'd be able to shift some money to better the programs for children. That's what the bottom line is, it's for the kids. So, looking at what you've done, I think you did a phenomenal job, and I think that's, that's for us then, to go back and discuss, and look at that, and look at what we have, and look at what Jeff has given us, and look at what Kevin and Cheryl, and make a learner choice, you know, decision. But thank you so much for your hard work. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, I'll echo a little bit what Jonathan said, I think you did a great job here, but the board is supposed to approve this budget, and you received a week ago, so it would be great if you can recommend what, upon this budget. We have done a lot of analysis regarding the numbers, decoding the numbers based on your information, just say, I think the goal is to get better quality education, not just by, by shifting money, but more effectively using this limited budget. So, give us some guidelines. The board member can approve this, disapprove that, that would be very helpful. I think you have done a lot of research that most board members here have done, so your knowledge would be very valuable to us.
Hey, Jonathan?
So, I'll just jump on the kudos train, kudos. It was a tremendous amount of work that you did, and I loved that, first glance at your recommendations, there was nothing that went, ah. It's all very reasonable, it's very thoughtful, reasonable, really careful, and reflective of the fact that you two share that goal, of giving the best possible product for our kids, so I think that's terrific. And I think, I was very proud of the District of the Administration for being so readily available to you, and I think that collaboration was fantastic, and I think the best part of this is not tonight, I think the best part of this is going forward. I think continuing that collaboration, allowing that door to stay open to the community, to, to serve that advisory role to us, to help us do our job better for the kids, is wonderful, so, thank you.
Thank you. And like, we, tonight is not the, the only night we've talked and, and discussed, you know, we've all read your emails with your suggestions, and, and I agree with, with Sue and everyone else, nothing jumped out, like, what are they crazy, you know, how could they want to do that? Everything was great. I mean, there's some things, look, you can't do everything, and I think you guys already knew that, but I think overall, the job that, you know, you're a team, I look at you as a team, and that's how you succeed, and you work together for one goal, and I truly appreciate the community, you guys, standing together and going through painfully, and with a lot of time and effort put in there, giving us what you've given us, and it definitely has been a tremendous help, and I look forward in the future to this every year. I think it's something that we should do going forward on an annual basis. Maybe the faces here will change, maybe they won't, we'll see, you know, there'll always be, there'll always be, there's always movement, and, but overall, you guys, really, and, and David?
Michael.
Michael, I mean, Michael, David, I'm looking at, you're, you're, Excel's amazing.
Beyond.
Beyond.
Don't let that guy get past this room.
Oh, it's, it's all over now, everybody's going to be calling you for Excel questions. Thank you, guys.
Can I just say, and we appreciate everything you've done, but just if you could look at those items that we showed that were, the budget was underspent, that money right there could be our elementary foreign language, it could be bringing back that STEM teacher and get our elementary kids coding, you know, as a parent, I don't oppose that, I support that, and I'm sure a lot of other people would. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if there are specific questions from, that you went over tonight, that you would like, you know, some of the things, Mike, that you showed us, that you want more information on, if you could let me know, if you could send me an email with those, you know, I want to make sure I get the answers to you. Rhian, I'll give you the information on those, those codes that we were just talking about. And then, of course, I, I, I'm sure you'll have more requests for information, but keep them coming, and we'll get the answers out to you as quickly as we can.
Are you going to do a traditional budget presentation tomorrow night at the board meeting, where you break down the, the different parts of the budget, like you typically do other years? Is that tomorrow's board meeting, or is that...
Yes, I will go over, yeah, what the tax cap is, where we look at state aid for now, the proposed budget that we have in place so far, where that stands with the tax increase, the 1.9%. I'll talk, I assume somebody from the committee is going to be at the meeting tomorrow...
Yeah, I put you, you're on the agenda, but there's no name, so...
Does somebody want to make a report tomorrow night?
Are you going to do a report?
If you want to, you can.
Or you're going to mess up my agenda?
We'll reconvene, we'll get a name in the morning.
Rhian will be there. If you want, if you want, there's a spot on the agenda for you, otherwise, I could talk about what we, we went over tonight.
I'll give the same presentation tomorrow night.
Excellent.
It starts to be four o'clock.
But that's up to you. Yeah, and I'll be going over that stuff, and then, and then we meet here, we meet, and, and the, the staff report that we went, we went over with you tonight, we'll go over that tomorrow night, and then a little information, you know, the budget vote, it's going to be, all be at the high school, that kind of stuff. And, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be great if, if somebody represented tomorrow, and, you know, not, you have to go through that whole thing again, of course.
No, not through the whole...
But, just, you know, just a general, you know, general statements or comments, and, you know, how this has worked so far, and, you know, I, I think it would be a good idea.
Is it possible to have all this to the public, available to the public, everything?
Yeah, I would imagine so, I just need to clean up a few things, like the travel line item.
Okay. If that's the case, maybe tomorrow, just announce you have this file, so people, whoever are interested, can look through.
Yeah, I mean, do we, I guess we never got anything set up on the webpage for the Budget Advisory Committee, that we could, a place where we could post?
You have a page for it.
Well, I can, if you, if you want me to put some stuff on there, just send it to me, and I'll get it posted on there.
The minutes are there.
Yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
Oh, and the audio recording, I just read the minutes, but the audio recording, too.
So, any other comments, so the same, that, that was a useful exercise, I think, but any other comments from the members of the committee, any other final closing thoughts?
I think the budget's over, John.
Yeah, I just think, you know, we're all, I think, on the same page. We're just looking to streamline the budget as much as possible, because we're looking to increase our, you know, the programs and the academics.
Right.
And everything that was said, we definitely, foreign language would be fantastic, coding would be fantastic, there's 100 million things, I'm sure, you know, bring STEM back, or some original programs.
Yep.
We're all on board for that.
Yep.
And paying for that, I don't think people mind paying for that. So, I think our goal was streamlining the budget enough, so we can bring those programs in and expand.
Exactly.
And, you know, keep Three Village as great as we are, and better.
And I think just one, one other thing, I guess, when we were talking in our, in our back and forth on this enormously long message chain, that has probably got 1,000 messages on it, I think going forward next year, if this is going to continue, I think that, I think we would discuss that it would be beneficial to start really at the beginning of the year with the Budget Advisory Committee, because I think this year, starting in January, left us, left you going crazy, giving us information, and Michael just finished five minutes before he got here. I think that it could really be much more beneficial if it went on, starting right at the beginning of the year, through the year, going forward, not starting in January.
Anyone that could, if they want to stay on for next year, I think they have a little bit of advantage, because we've got the education, the budget coding process, just a question that just, you may assume one thing...
And it's something totally different, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that was really the challenge with, with starting in January, is to ramp up our knowledge, and so...
Where are you, where are you going to school next year?
At my U.
Oh, so, you'll be around, you can come back and serve on the committee.
Which, which school are you going to?
College of Arts and Science. Actually, I study economics. I just wanted to add, like, one small thing. I know Mr. Ruffey was talking about, you know, academics and all that stuff, and I just want to reiterate, like I said last meeting, extracurriculars are, I think, really important, and that we don't talk about as much, and it's, you know, we don't have to spend a lot of money on that, but it's, it's also, I, I think it gives our experience, we get a much better experience with extracurriculars, because some of the clubs at, just at the high school are incredible, and they really, like, broaden horizons for students that we can't really get in the classroom, so that was just...
You are so spot on, 100%, and we talk a lot about it, at the other board members, we do. We think we have about 55 clubs at the high school, and Jelena's and Murphy, and of course, even in the elementary schools from K through six. We are huge, huge, positive experiences that we have heard and seen ourselves, and, you know, third hand and fourth hand, what have you. You know, we talk to a lot of people, of, of parents of all different ages, children, and the opportunities at this, at this district far supersedes anybody that you had up on that list, as far as I'm concerned. Now, there's always better, and there's always worse, absolutely, but I think the opportunities in any, we just give such a diverse amount, so that there's something for almost every student, to get them to go to school and stay there, because not every kid is a Regeneron, you know, winner, that we are very proud of, our Amber. But, that's not every kid, we don't have 5,600 of those, do we? No, nobody does. But we need to have all of these different things to keep our, to keep our kids invested in school, and keep our graduation rate almost at 100%, that is extremely something to be proud of.
Yep.
Did, did we find the money for the student newspaper?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that made it in the...
I wanted to make sure.
Did you end up selling advertisements to the Three Village Community businesses?
We were thinking about, yeah, we actually, we used to, so we might start doing that some more.
You should talk to the people at the Industry Advisory Board, there's lots of businesses there, I'm sure, be glad to...
We, we were thinking of going to every bagel shop all around the community, putting all the ads on the one page.
You only have to go to the David Prestier, just, just go see Dave.
I, I actually have one question, and this is because I sit on the board of the Civic, so I noticed that the Civic class, it looks like it's a newer class, even though the code has been used before for another class, and it, two years ago, I think the enrollment was 40, and now it's up to 55, but there was still four, there were four, I think it was four instructors, so that brought the average class size down. So, is there a program to, 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 I guess, push students to take that Civic class, or why, why we have that extra resource?
So, the, the elective offering is there for students, but again, remember how electors work, it's based upon student interest.
Yeah.
So, the State Education Department has pushed forward a Seal of Civic readiness.
Yep.
And we're in the process of applying to be one of the districts to, to do that. And that takes in a lot of different factors, that Dr. Gold will be presenting on later on this year, and will tie into the Civics course as well.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, as a member of the Civic Association, we'd be interested in, in partnering with that program to get some of the, those students involved.
Absolutely. And that's what, part of the Civic Seal of Readiness is, is that it's actually getting students not only to participate in their courses in school, but also be involved in their own communities.
Yep.
And I, I just want to mention about coding. So, our instructional coaches do a lot of exemplary lessons within the classroom, they do a lot of interaction within, with the students, and they model lessons for teachers to follow, which includes coding. So, I just want to mention that, that happens on a regular basis throughout the, the schools.
No, I think that's great, and, and what I was thinking of, I was at a conference recently, and I, a district on Long Island was showing the progression that they have from elementary through middle school, all the way to high school, so that all their high school students in ninth grade are taking AP Computer Science. So, every single kid in that school gets that opportunity, so I thought, you know, kind of that's where the trend is going, really start young, but with, you know, more of a push-in type of model, where they're getting that regularly, either there or in the library program, and then it continues to grow.
And we would agree with you 100% on our STEM program, the way that it was structured, did not necessarily allow for that continuity, where the classroom teachers being taught to do this kind of work is, is more sustainable, and that makes a lot more sense for us, so that it's on a regular basis, rather than less frequently, is, which is what happened with the STEM program. So, we have some thoughts moving forward, that Kevin will take the, the lead on with the elementary staff, to look at how we can deliver those programs more effectively within the classroom on a regular basis.
Tomorrow night, right?